Call the meeting to order. Take a moment for silent current reflections, please. Chair, will you call the roll, please?
Kat Rooney?
Here.
On the board?
Here.
Kathy Cox here. Cole Holmes, here. John Maston?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll undertake a motion to review and accept the agenda for this session.
Let me make a motion to review and accept the agenda.
I second.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Cole Holmes?
Yes.
Kat Rooney?
Yes.
On the board?
Yes.
John Maston?
Yes.
Review proposed April 17, 2018 Board meeting agenda, Mrs. Sire.
Thank you, Mr. Maston, members of the board. I would like to review our agenda for the meeting on April 17. We do have, in our recognition of the teachers, we are planning a grants update. And that grants update will actually address our special education grants, federal grants. It will address our technical education grants, and it will address our title grants to the federal government. Would also like to add, request that I can add to the agenda that we had not, didn't get the information in time. But we would like to do a recognition of our preschool staff and also of Mrs. Deborah Wager, who was given the award by First Things First earlier in the year, so she has been supporting us. Then looking at the consent agenda. We do have several sets of minutes. We have minutes from the regular session on March 13th, from the special sessions that were heard on February 28th, March 6th, March 15th, and two from March 28th. The work sessions of March 5th, March 6th, and March 28th. And the executive sessions of February 28th and March 28th. So there's a lot of minutes in there. Do you have any questions on any of the minutes? If you've got a chance to review them. Item 4.1.3 is the personnel report. 4.1.4 is the gifts and donations. 4.1.5, we have our requests for travel. We have two requests on this agenda. One of them is for the Lake Havasu High School seniors to go to Anaheim. Not all of the seniors, the student council seniors to go to Anaheim for a celebration. And then the second one is the request to approve the CTE students who qualify for nationals. Some of those students have already been identified, some of them are still in competition. But there are six, how am I going to write it? Six different opportunities that are noted here. Item 4.1.6 is a revision to our exhibit under the area of change of resident or admission of resident students. There have been some changes in the documentation form, and this document reviews those changes in the law. Simply some wording changes as well as a rephrasing of the affidavit request for information. And the guidelines are attached to that. Item 4.1.7, this is a job description we asked the board to approve. This is the job description for an elementary magnet teacher for the Classical Academy. This follows our regular job description format. We're looking to move forward with kindergarten and first grade, a classroom at each level. The areas in this job description that are different, if you'll note, under the major responsibilities and requirements. The critical competencies, curriculum and instruction. Those are the two areas that have been customized for this particular position as a Classical Academy job description.
I just had a question, it's not a big deal, but I noticed the qualification, it says knowledge of subject matter being taught, and then it says a minimum of five years' teaching experience. Well, the magnet school is going to vary a little from their regular curriculum. How are we going to judge if they have knowledge of the material taught? Just because they have four years' teaching history doesn't mean that they have knowledge of what we want them to teach.
Correct. Part of that will be in the questions. So we're developing questions. The information on what the curriculum sequence is, is present, is there. But the other piece that is part of the expectations is that the teachers would be willing to engage in training. So for example, one of the areas that they would need to be able to do is the teachers using Socratic methods, and not everybody's been trained in that. We're looking at a specific mathematics series that would require training over the summer.
Have we identified training programs for them?
Not specifically, no. Any questions on some of that?
So if, let's say, a kid in the Nautilus area wants to attend this, are the parents going to have to get him there?
Yes. That is the consent agenda. Moving into old business, section five. We do have the second reading of the website accessibility, and we have not made any changes in that. And then item 5.2 is a revision, a request for revision to our Quest Software Tools Award, which was awarded to Dell EMC. We did omit the tax in that original bid in August, or excuse me, in that original contract in August of 2019. So we're requesting an increase in that for $4,177.60, which will cover the sales tax.
I have a question. I've marked five spots in here where we're asking for money not to exceed from this point to that point. And yet, it seems like we're getting an awful lot of these things that are saying, can you give us an extra $5,000? Can you give us an extra $10,000? And I don't think this is fair to Mr. Murray. I don't think it's fair to the board. I think that these things are prepared, they should be prepared. And if they're not prepared, somebody should be answering why.
You may recall, we had a similar item that also was missing the sales tax from within this same area. And that was an error when we were doing these original software bids before we had our new supervisory tech.
I'm just saying, if you're running a business, about the second time one of your department heads came up saying, "Oh gee whiz, we're under," you'd be looking for a new department head. And all I'm asking is that if we're going to do this, we do it professionally.
Well, kind of what bothers me is whenever we get one of these, it's not just the department that's getting this. It says it's been renewed by business services and purchasing.
And by me.
And so we're not catching this at any level. So I have the same concern. I mean, we should, we should be getting accurate numbers, and we should be having final numbers come to us. I can understand if we're making material change, but to not include the sales tax and something with tax, we should question that.
And I can understand every once in a while, something like this is going to fall through the cracks. It's just that it appears to be getting repetitive, and that bothers me.
This is the second one. In the area under 6.1, under new business, this is a request to approve the Edgipoint software license agreement for a total of five years for a cost of $257,209. We actually signed on with ADE to provide our SSIS program, which is the synergy? Synergy program in 2014. And ADE had negotiated a statewide price so that districts could come on board. And they'd actually achieved their goals. So during that time, Edgisoft has actually posted all of the information. But ADE is no longer going to provide that support. They're transitioning everything back over to Edgisoft, so, or Edgipoint, excuse me. And so this brings forward our hobby contract pricing. The first year is at the 2016 ADE rates, and then you include the 2.5 percent escalator annually for years 2005.
So are there any material changes in the contract? Or is it essentially the same contract that ADE put forward?
Goodness, I'm just interested. What I can share is Alexis Clark and I have spoken about this, and she is the person that contacted me on a regular basis for support. And they do not have the personnel at the ADE to support. And so she's quite excited about the fact that Edgipoint will be now supporting us with synergy.
So would it suck from a third-party relay? Great. And gesture, David. That's the great one.
Item 6.2, this is a letter of support that is being brought forward for the governing board to approve. And this is regarding the Red Parade movement. Our Lake Havasu staff have embraced the Red Parade movement, and our community has stepped up by donating shirts and wearing red on Wednesdays. One of the things that we wanted to point out is that we support our educators. That our advocacy is to ensure that the maintenance operations fund is increased so that we can better support all of our staff with increased salary benefits. And so what this letter does is describe that we recognize this effort, and that for interested staff to participate would be appropriate. We did send this information to our attorney, and we do have two suggestive revisions in this letter. And I have a new copy of it at the table. But what this does is delete the last sentence in paragraph two. And it deletes students in paragraph four of that sentence. I do have copies at the supervisor. What is the next question, Steve? Let's see again. I'm sorry, in the very last sentence of paragraph four. So we're interested staff and community members to wear red.
Questions?
Comments? I'm undetermined how I'm going to vote on this. I, I've said before, I don't believe it's the board's place to get involved in politics, and I don't believe it is. And I question the entire theory behind Red Parade. Because I haven't seen anybody coming up with programs to reorganize the funding schedule in the state. Now, it's wonderful to put on a demonstration. But a demonstration that doesn't have a firm process for reviewing and repairing what's wrong is just a demonstration. And I haven't decided how I'm going to reorganize. I have some real questions about what we're trying to accomplish.
Actually, they have gone forth with plans on how to find the money.
Beg your pardon?
The ADE group has proposed plans to go forward on how to find funding money. They have taken it to the Capitol.
And isn't that, to a certain extent, legislatures now to?
Correct. Not only that, Doug Ducey will not sit down and hear our proposals as well. So if no one will listen, we can't give those out.
And that's part of the problem. And all I'm saying is that we need to address the problems, the dams in the way, the things that, these are things we need to address. Just walking down the street with a red shirt on is not going to get it done.
Correct.
And that's all I'm saying.
But when we met, this, the red shirts was what our administration said they could support. There are other things going on, but as a district, we decided that this is where we would show our support.
See, and I think we recognize that what you're doing.
Right, yes.
I think using the word outwardly support is a little different than using the word recognize. And there's a reasoning, a legal reasoning in the wording. But I, there's lots of loggerhead going on on both sides. And whether it's on the ADE side or on the state legislature side, I think there's compromise somewhere in the middle. And I'm just not seeing that come together. And I'm seeing no on one side, we must have on the other. And I don't fault anybody for wanting to have better pay, or better benefits, or better working situations. I think all of that's good. But I think that there has to be some pullback on each side on this issue to start putting a table in the middle so we can all sit down and talk. Until that happens, I don't see it being resolved, especially this late in a legislative session. This is my personal take on it.
And I think we all support the teachers, and we all believe you need bigger salaries. There's no question about that. And there's no question that the funding program is broken.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. All of our staff, we need support, and all of our staff need bigger salaries? It's nothing because?
What I'm saying is, the program is broken.
I understand.
And I understand it's broken. But I haven't heard anybody saying, "Let's cut funds here so we'll have funds here." All I've heard is, "Let's increase everything."
Well.
And I have a problem with that.
But isn't that kind of aside from the point? I think it's an important idea that if we, us people involved in it, don't stand up for education, nobody will. Nobody will.
And that's because of?
There's an awareness, it's an awareness to get studied of on fast.
And this isn't, as much as we see local people in the room about this, this is not, it's a local issue, but it's not. It's a funding issue coming down from the state. And I'll give you a couple of insights that I find very, very, I think, prominent in how this happens. The first one is, is if you go back to statehood, and you look at the Enabling Act of the state. We're supposed to be on an equal footing with other states. What's the number, Nicole? What's the percentage? Forty percent federally controlled land?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. That's tax-based that's missing. That's the federal government taking the tax base away from the state. That contributes enormously to where you're at. The other thing is, is that in Lake Havasu City, we get about $26 million in our revenue control, in our M&amp;O. We've got another $4 million in override dollars. Out of that money, in salaries and benefits for staff, we put out $26 million a year. We've got a power bill, Mr. Murray, correct me if I'm wrong, that's north of $1 million every year? Thereabouts? Mark the mark. Okay. So when you start looking at the $3 million left over, we've got programs and repairs and all these other things going on. If I were to tell you that Lake Havasu Unified School District has gone all in, and the community of Lake Havasu has gone all in for our staff and our employees, I don't think I'm stretching the truth there. I think we have gone all in. And the problem is, is that until you start looking at things like that property issue, and how do we start to actually raise the money to infuse into the schools? We're stuck. You know, especially in a community where, you know, you're talking about median household income of $52,000. It's just a very, very tough bank. And it's, everybody's in that boat. It's not just staff and teachers, it's the entire community that's stuck in that, here's as high as we can go boat. Is there a solution to it? Yes. I think it's going to require a court group from the legislature. I think it's going to require someone from the governor's office. I think it's going to require leadership from ADE or ADEA to sit down and go, "Let's work this out, and let's find some middle ground."
Sure.
But what we're doing here is we're saying, "We know there's a problem. We recognize with you that there is a problem. And we want to thank you for, at this point, taking the front line in it."
Sure, and I think, I don't speak for everybody, but I think that's what it is, is that we can only control so much. We can control this, so we should, we should take every avenue we can. We shouldn't really get penalized because there aren't, you know, real deals on the table being struck, because that's kind of out of our reach and push. We can find every resource we can, but there are, there are things that we can't do this weekend.
Like I said, I'm undecided right now, but the thing that worries me is you have young teachers out here that will go home at night, lay down on their pillow, and say, "Boy, I accomplished a lot today." And they're deluding themselves. That bothers me.
But isn't that really a subjective opinion you can offer to others?
So it bothers you, though, that I think we all go home every day and think we accomplished a lot. What, I mean, there's not a day I don't go home and think I accomplished a lot.
I'm saying, I'm saying, when we protest, when we go to the state, when we wear red shirts, we sometimes lead ourselves into believing we're accomplishing something that we're not accomplishing.
As soon as our governor or our legislators will sit down and talk to someone to get these things fixed, then we've accomplished something. Right now, we've taken a step to wear red shirts. The next step, and I know you all know, are the walk-ins tomorrow. There's a step after that, and there's a step coming after that. And unfortunately, those steps are being forced upon us because no one will sit down and talk to us. Governor Ducey is in his office laughing at us, saying to his staff that they're going to go away. "You get your 1 percent, now go."
Governor Ducey is actually saying, it's, this group right here is the reason why we're having this conversation.
That's actually a Republican committee narrative.
And so we're here asking you guys to take?
I can show you anything else, it's a leading narrative.
I have a quote from him. He said, "It's the district and the governing board who are not funding the teachers."
And I have tagged every single one of you that have Facebook in every single quote from a legislator and from Governor Ducey that has stated that. I was sitting in a room at the Capitol when legislators were telling me, "It's not us, we're sending them the money. It's them that's not giving it to you."
I've seen where they've published every superintendent in the state. But I've also gotten support documentation behind those things. And when I say this is a concerted coordinated effort, it is. I have proof right here.
I have documentation that shows tax cuts for our corporate, for 10 years. 10 years ago, it was 8 percent to the general fund. Now it's 3. We are asking them to stop cutting taxes, giving tax breaks. We are, we have stuff that we are specifically asking them.
Well, can you share that stuff with us? Because nobody's shared that with me.
I shared it with you in January.
I mean, in terms of this group, not a conversation we may have had on the way to or from Phoenix. I'm talking about when I go to the Facebook page for Arizona Educators United. I don't see a plan there to fix anything. If you've got ideas, everybody in this district has my cellphone. And even though some people don't think they can use it, I've encouraged people to use it. So I'd like to know what the plan is.
That's fine, but here's?
Can I finish talking before you interrupt me?
As soon as you lower.
Okay, well, I was, you were interrupting me, so I got louder. So if you have a plan besides just eliminating the $27,000 in tax cuts for 181 people, which does not fix this problem, I am all ears, because I've been working on this problem too. But you have not picked up the phone and called.
You're right, I haven't. You want to know why?
Sure.
The memo that our district got today with the threats against us for taking action.
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Our attorneys threatened us, if we were to take action, that there would be backlash if we were to do some of these things.
Okay. You can explain, but before you do explain?
The district have kept it to ourselves.
Before you explain that, we, especially the new members of this board, have gone out of our way to engage with the teachers. And all I hear is, "We're afraid." "We're afraid." Well, I don't know what you're afraid of.
The backlash that I've been threatened with now.
Okay, well, that's today, and that's obviously a new development that you're speaking of. But I'm talking up until now.
I've met with our superintendent and Mr. Maston, the president, to get this moving forward. And I thought we were on a good path, that we were looking to make sure everyone was comfortable. Then today, or yesterday, I saw the threat that came down from the attorneys, and I didn't think it was necessary.
May I ask you to disclose that threat?
Yeah.
I'd like you an accusation, I'd really like to put it on the floor.
Okay. The facts and questions regarding the Red Ed movement you got from the two attorneys regarding, "Can staff ask the students to wear red?" "Heck, no, you are hired to teach to standards, not to try to rope kids in to support your political agenda."
Who wrote that?
"If you want to see backlash, just try this."
Who wrote this?
If I may interrupt here, this is, the ASA, which is the Arizona Superintendent's Association, sent out a document that had two different attorneys' opinions on several questions that had been asked. And so one of the areas that we talked about, and it has several questions in there, one of them was about students. And so I shared that with the principals today, I did share that via email with the board.
And I did read that, but I was thinking something came from Tosca.
No, 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 those were just two attorney opinions that were out there that had been shared with the administration. And so one of the areas that we have said, and I will share this from our principal's meeting today, we haven't even talked about it, are no threats at all, but that it is inappropriate to have students wearing red. There was, it's actually in the law, the same thing for political activism, is that if you are a supervisory employee and you implicitly support something, then if somebody doesn't support something, do they feel, it's sort of like the harassment thing, do they feel like they might be discriminated against if they do support it or don't support it based on the supervisor's opinion? And so that is actually one of the reasons why the language in this particular letter is that we recognize this, and we encourage the interested staff to support it. And then the other area in here is, we have noted that we do believe that communication is critical, and we encourage responsible advocacy. Not irresponsible advocacy, but responsible advocacy. Because if there's going to be a change at the state level, that's not going to happen without some advocacy. So whether a statewide movement will have an impact at the state level, I don't know. But I think that people understanding that the state's decisions impact us even here in Lake Havasu is an important point to my view.
And I don't think, I don't want to understand, I mean, want to understand. We well understand your problems. I mean, we've read them, looked at them, listened to them. We understand your problems. My only question, I brought this up, is I'm not sure that the methodology is correct. That's all I'm trying to say to you. You better know. I don't care if you wear purple and walk on your hands. I just don't think that methodology is what's going to succeed.
Mr. Ward? Two years ago to this day, I have posts on Facebook that is saying the exact same thing. We have been having this conversation for over two years now.
We, as a standard?
But we've made a lot of changes over two years as well.
What?
We've made a lot of changes over two years.
We have made a lot of changes, Nicole. You are absolutely right, "we," and that's why we're asking for "we" to stand together on this one.
The state record, though, I mean, just so that you know, how long this conversation's been going on as a state. If you go back to 1913, you can see a governor and a superintendent in public education going at each other in the public record for the state over funding. We have had funding issues in this state since day one. This is not new.
But it shouldn't, it's not, doesn't make it okay. They're looking at you saying your kids are low-income, so they shouldn't have high expectations.
It's, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, it's not a new issue. What we need to do is, we need to find, we find a new approach, and a right approach in how we address our state and our legislators and our governor. And, you know, the same, the same old methodology isn't going to work. And I would agree with Mr. Ward. And I would agree with Mr. Ward. I'm not necessarily huge fan of the methodologies employed in this on either side of the equation. And I'll restate it, but again, I think that there are mistakes being made on both sides of this and not in a good way. So at the end of it, I, you know, do I respect the fact that you guys need more funding out there? Do I respect the fact that your paychecks need to be bigger? I absolutely do. And we are going to the point where we're actually looking at a letter in the board vote to show you that we respect you. The community respects you so much in Lake Havasu that they went out and they approved the bond and the override. I mean, if you carry those all the way out, you're talking about $80 million worth of respect. That's huge. So at the end of it, I think that the community supports you. And I think it would be a mistake if we didn't bring that in and recognize that from a local perspective, you're getting a lot of respect. From a state perspective, you guys are at loggerheads, and you're not agreeing on even what type of sandwich you're going to have for lunch. So we need to, we need to have, you know, kind of a meeting of the minds. We're not threatening you. We're not taking away your political speech. But there are rules at the state level that govern what we can do and what we can't do, and what you can do and what you can't do in regards to this inside of a school setting. And that's all we're saying. We're not threatening anybody. We're simply saying, "Look, we're all going to follow the rules, and we're all going to come out of this okay."
I would like to point out what's different since 1913. You mentioned a school superintendent. What's different now is that this is the first time since I've been involved with education in Arizona that we actually have principals and superintendents and board members signing on, writing letters. Finally, after all of these efforts back to 1913, or who knows how long, finally, people are waking up, and that includes parents and community members and people who understand that the only way to have a good state and a good community is to have good schools. And the only way to have good schools is to have good teachers. The only thing that matters is having good teachers. And we've tried, and we've tried, and we've gotten wonderful local support over the years. So this isn't about local support. This is about a state movement that has amazingly made its way to Mojave County and Lake Havasu. Unheard of for a state movement like this to actually have people who are ready to walk, do a walk-in tomorrow, to be here with the red shirts. I'm, what this does for me, it's just, it moves us somewhere else. It moves us onward and upward. And this is what's going to make the difference, is support from all kinds of people and groups in the communities, including school boards, school board members, superintendents, principals, and so forth. I would like to remind you that we have done, we have done everything we can to figure out a solution to this. And you're right, we are at loggerheads. But some years ago, there was a case taken to the Arizona Supreme Court, and the Arizona Supreme Court acknowledged what's in the Arizona Constitution, which says that the state of Arizona will adequately fund prisons, roads, and schools. And because that's in the Arizona Constitution, the US, I mean, the Arizona Supreme Court supported the lawsuit and told the legislature, "You're going to have to fund schools." And the legislature ignored it. I mean, you're talking about a rule of law here. You're talking about how we govern in the United States, whether we respect Supreme Courts or not. And that has not happened. So finally, people are catching on. People are saying, "We want good schools. We're going to find a way to support this." And this movement, it cannot stop. And I ask my fellow board members to view it in that light. And all we have, all that we're being asked to do is sign this letter in support. That's all. And I appreciate the input that John had in that. I appreciate it more than you realize, and Kelly, and Carol, and Mrs. Asire as well. And I hope you will seriously consider signing it because I can't see anything bad that can come out of it. The only answer is for this movement to swell and to get more and more support. If we lose it here, and we lose it in other school boards, and this is going on tonight, all over Arizona in other school boards, if we lose it here, are we going to start all over again? It's unbearable. We've got some momentum here. And I'm hoping that the board will vote to support this letter.
And Mr. Ward, if I touch on your point about the bond and override and winning over respect of the community, it's a real fragile respect, like always, and it's still new. But during the bond and override, we talked about it not being a fix because it's not fixing the problem. The problem is, is we further on down the road, we get this bond and override right now.
And this was a topic of conversation as well, that, you know, I was on the Citizens for Havasu Schools Committee, and what we had talked about internally there was, it was a start of a conversation I met, I thought, pretty public.
Actually, the Citizens for Havasu Schools meetings, as I remember, talked about from day one that the override and the bond were something that we were planning to constantly go after. And that was part of the planning process.
You're correct. Because we are unsure as a community about what our state will do with education funding. So you have to play both sides of the aisle. You've got to say, "Yes, we need to plan for more bond and override dollars. But what we really want to do is we want to get more money to MNO." And the reason why we're saying MNO is because every time our state does additional teacher funding, call it 301, or when they did pay 301, then we got 1, 2, 3, and 70 cents on the dollar, these 1 percenters they're doing now, they're carve-outs. They're things that they can just take the match, if they race for two down the road, and go, "Yeah, now, got the money for that one this year." And to put it to MNO, to put it in control of a local district, does, I think, our staff the biggest favor it can do. It becomes part of the funding formula. It becomes part of the permanent per pupil base, and we get it every year. So I think that's probably a better, long-term targeted solution than MNO. And how to raise that MNO bar up enough so where we can do things responsibly as a district and as a community.
If I touch on a really common, sorry.
No, if I might, I, the adversarial part. I don't see the AEU as an adversary of school boards or anybody except the funding system itself at the state. And I will gladly tip my cap to both the new and the remaining members of the school, our school board, who have fought for teachers and have done things that have shuffled some things around and prioritized teachers. And for that, we're grateful. And I think the AEU is addressing exactly, Mr. Ward, exactly what you were saying, is that it's the state, it's the state funding. And John, with MNO, I think those numbers, since, just since I started teaching here 10 years ago, 11 years ago, we're still not there. We're not back to where we were with Prop 1, 2, 3, with 301 being settled for, you know, the 70 cents on the dollar, as you said, the 1% sales, the 1% raise. None of that is, none of that is, has been moved on with what state law had required, according to at least Prop 301. And what you're, what you see there is, it has to be a deck for inflation because, like you said, with 87%, 90% of MNO goes to our teachers.
85.
85. Health insurance continues to go up, so that number's going to continue to rise, which is why 301 worked in that inflation. And then the state said, "We're not going to pay it because we can't afford it." But then, as Carol pointed out, they have money for taxes. That movement seems to be addressing exactly that, saying that this isn't a priority because you've been prioritizing other states.
But as I said, my question isn't what you're doing. My question is methodology. And I don't want to see hands or anything, but when everybody dresses in red, I'd like you to hold a survey. How many of them have written to their congressman? How many of them have written to the governor? How many of them are going to vote to put their same representative back in office? There's a big between that and putting on red and walking down the road.
I would like you to ask for, I mean, I don't know if anybody here would be willing to raise their hand for that question, but I think you might be surprised by it.
I think that probably would.
So when Prop 1, 2, 3 was going on the ballot, I was adamantly against Prop 1, 2, 3. And I did extensive debating and went on my own little mini-circuit. And I didn't have anybody supporting me.
You had my support.
I don't recall that, but I'll take your word for it. So here's the thing with this Red for Ed movement. If I don't support Red for Ed, I don't support teachers. And we know that's not true because I've gone out of my way to. When you all wore pink shirts saying, "Stand together," I was right there supporting you because it was local. I don't want to buy into a national group. I don't support the AEA. I support Carol. I like Carol. Carol's a reasonable person. But by asking me to support this, you're asking me to support the NEA. I don't support their ideology at all. I read through 80 pages today of the NEA. They do a lot of things that I don't support. So when I sign this letter, I'm supporting that. You can say no, but when I go to Red for Ed, it says AEA right there in the corner. And AEA, when you go to AEA, you can look it up right now because I was just there before I came in. And when you go to AEA, they don't have their own website. It's a part of NEA. So it's all the same ideology, in my opinion. I believe in people. I believe in the people in this town, and I would fight for it. There is a legitimate funding problem. When I did that presentation last October, I don't know if anybody remembers, but in there, I talked about, "You can't keep asking for more money because people tune out. They don't hear it anymore." You have to start asking for them to reduce the mandates, the unfunded mandates. That means Title 15. That means challenging, you know, what they're passing through the legislature, questioning what they passed the year before, and determining whether or not they funded it. Those are the ways that we can change things, along with coming up ways to fund. But a lot of the funding issue is the unfunded mandates that nobody's outraged about. I'm outraged about them, but nobody else is outraged about them. And then my question, and I hate to ask it to you again, but I know it's a 20% increase. So does that mean a brand-new teacher that comes out of college that has no experience, never taught in our district, they get a 20% increase in this Red for, I mean, it says 20% across the board for staff and everybody. Does that include the people that just got, you know, bumped because of the minimum wage? Does, I mean, this is such a big thing. Sure.
I have staff schedules back to 2004. There was times that we didn't just get a vertical. We got a vertical and $1,000. So we got 750 plus $1,000 because we added to the base. And the next year, we got 750 and $1,000. And the next year, we got 750 and $1,000. And the next year, we got 750, 750. And the next year, we got 750, 750. Then we got 750, and then we got none. So that's what I have in front of me. So there was times that when they did come out, so here's our base today. And then next year, when they hired, yeah, our base went up. And it's called a livable wage. And that's, I mean, I, this is Lake Havasu New York School District, you know, the last 18 years. I pulled these. I looked at them. If we used a staff schedule from 2006, 2007, I would be making more.
Well, and I...
And that's including 301.
And I understand that.
And that's including Prop 1, 2, 3. So, I mean, we're talking over 10 years. And so, and I'm not, I'm not, you know I'm not one to complain about myself at all. But that's the reality. So, I mean, but we do have new teachers coming out with $40,000 loans. I didn't have that. It's for my masters. Our new teachers can't. I mean, these are, it's just our reality.
So I understand that. I understand that it's the reality. A lot of people have that reality in Lake Havasu that if you don't have a family in this district, we pay your premiums 100%, right? That's unheard of today, especially after everything that we went through. Like, you don't want to see the premiums that me and my husband pay. I'm sure there's other people maybe on this board that pay. Well, maybe not the two that are retired. But these are considerations that have to be taken. There is only so much money. And finding solutions, I'm all in for that, but I don't see a solution. Demanding, that's because that's what it literally says, not in this letter, but in the, on the Facebook page or the new website, it's demanding. So I understand the outrage, but where's the outrage when the State Board of Ed is requiring us or grading us on our letter grade to fill out FASFAS, to populate the very universities, that we're in competition for our dollars? Is anybody outraged that the universities are getting all this money and our brand-new students are coming out with $40,000 in debt? And it's a lot more than $40,000.
Right.
Because mine was U of A, and it was $64,000. So, my daughter, not mine, my daughter. So I understand these things, and I think locally, we have tried to work every way we can. And it would be really nice if we worked on that, if there was some effort, instead of just protesting. Because people in this town didn't see the pink shirts as a threat. People in this town see the red shirts as a threat because the red shirts represent a political ideology and that doesn't exist in the town we live in, for the most part. And I'm not saying it, you know, I respect you a lot. We agree on a lot of things. I don't hold it against you that you're a part of the AEA, you know? But that's not what people see. They see, "We've been having marches in our country. The political climate in our country is out of control, and now it has invaded our town. And we will be struggling to explain..." No, no, it doesn't mean that way. You don't have time to explain to everybody that that's not what the movement means.
Have I heard anybody? I have not heard one negative comment from a community member, a parent, other teacher. Or maybe it's just the people, a certain group that you refer to.
I've heard from one, and that is from our EBT board. And he had no problem telling me how horrible it was and the fact that it was a connection between NEA and communists. And the reality is, it's not that.
Can I say something to that? The red shirt started when I got involved. I was against No Child Left Behind, which is the federal government abroad. And I joined a group, became a national group that's for our schools. And we actually ended up having a march in Washington, DC. And the red shirts went back to that time, not because any of us were Marxists or communists or anything like that. It was, I was called Red for Ed because it rhymed, and people were asked to wear them on WED, Wednesdays, which doesn't rhyme. But it kind of, okay, I've got a Red for Ed, okay, I'm going to wear this on the Wednesdays. Now, the movement, that movement here in Lake Havasu didn't come to much. Nobody seemed to care. But I care. I just want to clarify the red, the color red, was just the fact that those words rhyme. That was all. Now, let me just say one more thing. And someone, correct me if I'm wrong. When this AEU movement started, I was kind of brought on board. Somebody joined me up, and I started kind of seeing it. There wasn't much going on. There were like four or five names that kept showing up all the time. And they were local, I mean, state, Arizona teachers, a few Arizona teachers. This movement swelled in such a small amount of time. But I'm sure this did not start with AEA. I'm sure that what happened is, once it got going, AEA, which organizations often do, said, "I endorse this." And they did. But this is not an AEA movement. And you can see so many questions on the site. "Well, I'm not a member of the association. Can I be in this?" And everyone, others, "I'm not either, I'm not either, I'm not either." Yes, you can, yes, you can. This is not, regardless of what you think about unions. I just want to correct how it started. That has many people, many teachers who are not members of AEA. And so, don't be against it, simply because AEA decided to come on board and say, "We will endorse this." And that's just about as simple as I can make it. If anyone wants to correct me, please do.
It actually came about with the West Virginia strike. A teacher down in Phoenix decided to pick up and move on. And we've been in contact with West Virginia. We've been in contact with Oklahoma. We've been in contact with Kansas City. AEA is a support. We're grassroots. We make teacher income. AEA has allowed us to use their attorneys. So, we don't break any statutes. So, we don't get teachers or any educators in trouble with anything that they do. AEA is not the head of this. They're not running it. They're not in charge of it. They're on the outside, giving any guidance that is being asked of them.
I think if you look back over the record of this board, there's very few things I voted against. But I make it a point to always bring up the side nobody's looking at. Because I think it's important to have that discourse. One other thing about this that bothers me is this. If I vote for this, I get to put on my cape and get on my skateboard and go down the road, and I'm the hero of the day. If I vote against this, I'm automatically against all teachers in the district. That bothers me.
I don't believe you're a hero just for signing that.
I'm just saying...
I think you coming out and saying that teachers in our district, in our state, and all educators, whether you work in, as a parapro, maintenance, anywhere, deserve more.
And I, you know the thing, because as I look through the document, there's a number of things that, that I see. It says that students' right to quality public education. We all agree on that. Educators across the state have joined the Arizona Educators United Movement to demand clear, sustainable solutions to Arizona's educational funding problem. And, you know, over the years, even the university presidents are saying the same thing. And that's one of the reasons that tuition has gone up so much at the universities. Because right from the school districts on up through the universities, it's inadequate funding. It wasn't something created here. It's something that was created down in Phoenix. And so, we come up with these things. We've developed a parallel public school system, charter schools that are publicly funded. We've come up with all these other ideas, which is the tax vouchers originally for public schools. That's $400. And you can take $2,100 around that for private schools. That's all money that used to go into the state for public schools.
By taxpayers.
Yeah, by taxpayers. And now, what we're doing is, we're thinking of maybe vouchers, and we have these empowerment scholarships. I don't care what you think. That is all money that used to go in the public education that isn't going there. Wasn't created by the taxpayers or the public citizens here. But now, all of a sudden, you hear these politicians, "Well, if you really want this, you can have these overrides." So, they're pushing responsibility out to the local areas, and they're aggregating their responsibilities. Now, I don't have a problem with that. And I don't believe in strikes for schools or politicizing it. But the problem is where people are talking about it, and it's down at the state level. And really, when we go ahead and we say that we support something like this, we're really sort of protecting the local taxpayer and the local public citizens. Because if something isn't done, more and more, what's going to happen is override after override is going to have to be passed. I mean, it just, you know, I just, I don't know why people don't see this. And so, you have this real big push to privatize education in the state of Arizona. And there was a great article in the Arizona Republic about losing quality teachers to surrounding areas. They're leaving. Why are they leaving? Because of the pain. So, they can go up to Needles. They can go to El Centro. They can go across the border into New Mexico. They're going to Las Vegas, or whatever. And I think it's just pretty obvious that it's not a problem that was created by teachers, by school boards at the local level, or local politicians. It's by the people who have been elected down at the state that have said, "Please, come up with a different idea of how we can fund it," which falls more and more on the local communities.
As somebody who's worked outside education, I just want to make one statement. Just put this in the back of your head. If a union is letting you use their lawyers, they're not doing it because they're so generous. They're not doing it because they're magnanimous, like they really care about you. You believe that? You've got a snake in your pocket.
First of all, they're the education association. So, yes, I do believe that they care about me, which is why I pay them dues every year. And we are fighting for the same thing, to get the funding changed, so that all schools can be funded correctly. So, I do believe that they are using, working with us for good intentions.
Can I, can I add something up? Because as we've had this discussion, the predominant word on what this is being done for, and the board is guilty of it, and the audience is guilty of it, is the word "teacher."
I agree with you.
This would be for everybody who works in education in the state. This isn't just for teachers. Okay. I just, I want to make sure that we have that distinction on the table, especially with press moves.
While we're doing distinctions, I think we should also distinguish the fact that this isn't just for people to get money in letter insurance. This is for education.
No, there are little children involved in this.
Absolutely.
Well, I'd like to know what you mean by that. I'd like to know what you mean by that. This isn't just for educators and employees and their benefits and salaries. It's for education, meaning what?
And how we balance our budget, and how educational funding fits into our top priorities. And not just that, it's bringing back arts, it's bringing back music. It's becoming the community that it was built to be. And you go around here, we've got these massive buildings, and we're capable of so much. And from a business aspect, if we don't get the proper inputs, we can't give people the proper outputs.
I'm glad you brought that up. I totally agree with that. There's a problem with Title 15. It makes your vision and my vision, not that they're the same vision, but what you're saying and what I'm saying, it makes it almost impossible. And that's why I believe the fight is there, not the Red for Ed. It's with the mandates. It's with the unfunded mandates. I mean, I just had a conversation last night over testing with Diane Douglas. And she informed me that the legislature appropriated $16 million for Arizona Merit Test. And her department has to come up with the additional $4 million to pay for it. That's an example of an unfunded mandate. It's not, you know, they passed it, they made it law, but they're not funding it. And that's just one example.
That's kind of like in the classroom, when we're told our students will be tested on the easy merit, but we don't have the materials that we need to teach them. So, it's the same, this is our fight.
Well, it's everybody's fight.
I understand that. But with the Title 15 and comparing it to what they've got going on up in that office, this is what's in our hands right now. And, yeah, maybe we don't all know the ins and the outs of that. But we're paying attention to what's happening in the classroom and with our school funding.
I'd like to point out that the red shirts brought that conversation up. You're talking about, you're bringing stuff that they don't necessarily even know about. But I think that we're getting a little off the point of the fact that what these shirts are for is awareness. And what they're connected to at this point are peaceful walk-ins that don't disturb anybody. And I don't know what else. Besides raising awareness, and when people see these shirts, we're all too stretched and too stressed and too busy to take on anything else. But if we have simple slogans like "Red for Ed," or "Red Shirts," it's a start of the conversation. Because I don't know about you guys, but during the bond and override, I totally appreciated our community. It was amazing what they did. But how many people voted? How many people even knew what was really going on? There's still a serious lack of awareness and effort.
Well, everybody's overloaded. When you think about, I mean...
And that's what we're trying to make real, tight steps.
The news, everybody's on overload. And I know you all are too. But this, in my opinion, I just got a copy of the letter that the AEA and Arizona Educators United sent to Governor Ducey. And I'm just, they listed five points, 20% salary increase for Arizona teachers. It does not say staff.
Read the next one.
Okay. Competitive pay, competitive pay for education support professionals. Okay? Does professionals have some sort of meaning?
It does. And the reason...
So, that's not all staff, then?
Everyone except for server. And I, there's a disclosure on that.
I just want to finish before, and then...
Okay, then I can go back.
So, then, the number three is permanent certified salary structure, which includes annual raises. Number four, restore education funding to 2008 levels. And number five, no new tax cuts until per-people funding reaches the national average. And I'm open to debate for the top three. But number four and number five, this is why I have a problem with slogans, or Red for Ed, or anything else. Because number four, restore education funding to 2008 levels. Do we understand in 2008, we didn't have as much, as many students in our K-12 system. We didn't have as many teachers in our K-12 system. So, restoring K-12 funding to 2008 levels without taking into consideration all the new unfunded mandates, all the new teachers, and all the new students in the system, mathematically, it's impossible when we have a legitimate funding problem in the state. The problem is, is that we have too many kids in the system, 11th highest in the country, and the 12th highest in the country. So, we're missing, and our land problem. So, we don't have the property tax, we don't have the income tax, and we've got a ton of kids and teachers to take care of. So, that number four, in my mind, is unrealistic. That's just throwing something out there. Because when people hear, "Well, just restore it to 2008." Well, that seems, sure, why not? That was so long ago. But there's more to it than that. And then, number five, no new cuts until per-people funding reaches the national average. Again, we're comparing apples and oranges. We're comparing our state, our per-people funding, with states that have enormous resources. All their land is at property tax base. A ton of people working in the system, paying income tax. All that's going to the general fund that we don't have. So, there is a legitimate funding problem. And it would be really nice if the educators came up with an ironclad plan. I know there's some math whizes in here that could start that. But if you have a plan where you can educate the voters before the candidates get out there, and I don't care what side of the political spectrum I'm on. I've made it very clear, I'm only a Republican, because it's the only way to be involved in the process in this town. But I am a libertarian, period, end of story. And so, it doesn't matter where you stand on the political spectrum, but you have to be able to educate everybody on what the real problem is. And it can't just be, "I need more money." Because everybody in this room that went to become a teacher knew that they weren't going to get paid. They knew that they weren't eligible.
That was every year. We'd be in trouble.
Because I heard all of you say that. I'm sorry, I didn't know. So, now, I'm going to be shamed.
That's true. But you knew you weren't going to make money, so you're stuck.
No, 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 no. To be, oh, come on. Really?
That's what you just said.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry that you're taking it that way. What I'm saying is, nobody goes to school to become a teacher, to become wealthy. Does that clarify it?
Better.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to offend. I really didn't. I'm saying is, this is, everybody knew it was going to be a financial struggle. You're not going to go become a teacher...
It's supposed to be a struggle. That's just it. No, we are not supposed to have to struggle. That's what we are fighting for. We are tired of struggling.
Well, I'm not saying that you're not supposed to, that in a ideal world...
No, we're just saying that that's acceptable. That we should just accept that.
No, what I'm saying is that you...
That's what you said.
Okay. What I'm saying is, my daughter knew, when she went to U of A and started the teaching program, that she better find a rich husband. Because she knew. That's what she said to me. Oh, my gosh. Okay, I will stop, because I guess I can be real...
What year was that?
That was 2010.
Right.
Yeah.
But for me, who started in 1994 and has a salary schedule that says what I would make in thirty years?
So, what does it say?
It's a step, it's a step...
Well, like I said, even in, I have as far back as 2006, '07. I mean, I have as far back as 2005.
What should your salary schedule should you be making right now?
Well, we don't have a salary schedule.
On that one? According to the one in your head?
Not the years.
Which one do you want me to look at?
The one that we chose.
I just want to throw out a number, so that I can wrap my head around what you're saying.
We're getting a little bit sideways here, though. And the item of force is really, really the letter to recognize the effort. So, I want to redirect us back to that discussion.
The question would be for the board, do you have the expertise you need in regards to this letter for it to come forward? I invited all my friends here to provide the backup here.
I think the AEA and Educators United letter should be attached to the letter for the board to read.
The one that...
That was sent to the governor.
I think it's important, not to get off, John, but today, Governor Ducey made an announcement, it was televised on TV, that 80% of the state's budget is going to education. Well, certainly, he knows that that's totally inaccurate. And I think it's really important for us to clarify, to correct, and not to have the wrong information out there. And so, that he's way, way off. And it concerns me that he doesn't know what that percentage is, because it's not 80%. I can present that next Tuesday, about what it actually is. But my eyesight's not good enough.
That's a whole nother debate.
Right, I'm just, I'm just saying...
There are several numbers on that. Well, we should probably look forward.
No, but I think it's a mistake not to have this conversation while everybody's in the room, to shut it down and move along, so that we can have it again next Tuesday. I mean, I did not mean to offend anybody by saying that. I would speak, I would say it from my own perspective. And I'm sorry, my grandmother was a school teacher, my daughter was going to be a school teacher, so...
Well, and it's not a problem with the conversation. I mean, we have an item of business in front of us that the conversation is getting very far away from.
Right. I understand that. But how else do you communicate?
We're showing it right now.
Joan, can I just say, and I know that Nicole won't probably agree with this, but I do want to say, I'm not sitting here because I want a teacher's raise. Yeah, we all want teacher's raises. Yes, I want, you know, what I can have. I'm too old to move right now. I'm pretty much planted. I know where I'm at and where I'm going to be. The reason I'm sitting here right now is for the students. It's for the kids that sit in my classroom every day. It's for my high school student, who his civics textbook has President George W. Bush, number one, as the current president. You know, it's about the whole picture. It's not me as teacher raises. That's not why I'm here. I'm here for the kids. My ideology is, what's best for the students.
Well, what about all the emails we're getting from the people who are leaving our district? We have to be able to attract people. Because as far as I know, they're not just sitting out in our community. We've got to be able to get people here as well.
It is why I like that, Kelly. And I agree entirely with what it is. And I'm here because I do have a five-year-old, who's going to be going to kindergarten next year. And she has a lot of friends that, we all want to see them have the best, the best teachers. And it's, it's not realistic to ask them to stay when they can move to Nevada, when they can move to Colorado, et cetera, and immediately get a huge, a huge increase in pay. And, yes, of course, we would all like a little bit more money to spend as well. But we do have, we do have something vested in it. And honestly, there's a lot of teachers... And honestly, there's a lot of teachers in my position that don't have any ties to the community, that have four or five-year-olds, and they would consider moving, and may consider moving, for the exact reason that they might have some of their better teachers, and they see them go to Nevada, to Colorado, et cetera. And so, it is, it's an emotional issue for, for us on both a personal level, but also on a level with the kids. And some of us see that immediately, you have a child that's graduating now, I have one that may be starting, will be starting, excuse me, school. I will be here. I'll be here. And, and so, those, those types of things do, are a part of the opposite, of course. And it, it, I understand how it can come across as being a little selfish. But at the end of the day, we also, if we step back and look at it, it's, it is also for the kids, 90%.
When I talk methodology, I want you to be successful. I want you to know that right now. I taught for years. I'm a firm believer you should be successful. But turn your television on tonight, and every news channel is talking about the teachers' raises. That's all they're talking about. Your, your methodology has to approach the media, it has to approach the legislators, and you have to change the paradigm. As long as people are looking at you like the only thing you're interested in is raises, they're going to resist you. And, and people don't understand that. And the press is using this, they're sitting on it, and they're saying, "Oh, the teachers of Arizona want a pay raise, they want 20%. They want..." And they're not saying a thing about that textbook you're talking about. They're not saying a thing about the despair that's in front of you.
Is the media reporting that, or are people saying, like, you know, uh, sorry, Catherine, I'm throwing you out there, but Catherine, a parapro saying, "Teachers need raises," or myself, "Teachers need raises." We can't control, just like we can't control what our local newspaper writes and puts in there, but we can push. Like, I've asked to make sure we say that all educators, whether it be a parapro, maintenance, transportation. But I can't make them write that. I can't make them say that.
And Mr. Board, I don't want to...
You'd be surprised what you can make the press do.
I don't want to come to you.
No, I haven't seen it here in our local paper.
I wrote an editorial for Prop 123, drawing a clear distinction and why, and they printed it, and they changed it.
But Mr. Board, you yourself have said teachers several times today, and I'm trying to expand that. And that's our problem with Governor Ducey, because he focuses, he says teachers. Two years ago, when we were out here in Pink, and the newspaper did say teachers, I called him on it. I said, "Brandon, that's not okay. We are all in this together, and this is educator." And he, we had dialogue about it. We can't change, there's, every time I've had a interview for the last two, three weeks, I've always said educators. I've never said teachers. The headline was teachers. I can't, I can't control what they say, and I always say, I believe that's a choice.
I can't do your public relations for you. All I can say is, which do you think would be more effective? Educators need, or our kids don't have textbooks, we need textbooks for our kids. There's different ways to approach this problem, and that's the only reason I question this letter. I question the methodology you're using. We all want you to be successful. Everybody wants you to be successful. I'm just asking you to think about it. There may be better ways to approach it.
I might have to tag you in a few Facebook posts. Because it is all about the students.
Are we, are we going to wrap this one up in your line?
Well, we didn't touch, talk about the kids, and going back to what Kelly had originally said about getting threats, I want to make that distinction again because that was not from our district or any of our attorneys or staff. But as far as asking kids to wear red, the whole reason, or one of the big reasons that I agreed to get involved with Citizens for Havasu Schools for the bond and the override was because Steve Greeley promised that we would not use kids for the politics to, to promote it. So, in my opinion, it doesn't change, no matter what the subject matter is. I don't want our kids being used, asked or used. I think it's totally inappropriate. It's a worry that they don't need to worry about.
I agree.
1000%.
I agree.
But if a student asks me why, you know, and a student comes to me and says, "Why he goes all wearing red?" Well, we're trying to get more funding because... I'm honest. I'm not going to say, "Oh, well, it's not any of your business."
Well, and, and nobody's asking you not to, not to answer a question.
So if they choose to stand beside me, I'm not going to, what do you want me to say? "I'm sorry, but our school board has decided you need to go away."
It's not a school board decision that says that they need to go away. It's, it's actually something that was in that communication, and it may be a violation of state law.
It's not. It was in their opinion. It specifically says, "In my opinion," they do not, the statute does not say anything about it.
Well, as a parent court, who is highly interested in making sure that his children are gaining quality education, who got involved in the political process as a part of the failure of the override, or the bond, excuse me, 2014, I personally, and this is me personally, do not want my children involved in march and photograph or in a red shirt. I want my children to go to school in Lake Havasu Unified School District, and I want them to be educated. Now, that's my personal take as a parent. I think that if you, if you start adding the children in, you're starting to give them a political thought process, a political ideology at a very basic level. And, and as a, as a parent, that bothers me a little bit, and that's the fundamental part of it. I think as a matter of answering questions and the civics end of it, sure. But, but to start pushing them into political ideology, or, or to make them part of a walk-in or some type of a protest point, absolutely not as a parent.
Correct, but I didn't say making them. I said if they chose to stand...
My children can't make that choice intelligently because they don't have the base information to make that choice.
So who's supposed to make the choice? You or me?
Me as a parent.
Okay, so if they choose to stand next to me tomorrow, I do not have to look at them and tell them to go away?
As a parent, I would expect you not to have them in pictures, use them to promote my ideology.
I'm not. I'm just...
If they're standing next to you, and the newspaper snaps a picture of that?
I don't have control over that. I'd be talking to a student, having a conversation. I mean, I guess I'm trying to find out where, what do you want me to do?
I, if you're asked a question, I, I would expect an answer that, you know, that, that you're, you're hoping the state would, would work with you on a better pay structure, or more funding for schools, or help improve, improve the situation.
Two things, I tend to, at times, just once in a while, to be their opinion. But I made it a rule when I was a teacher, that my opinions were never expressed to my students. Any of my opinions, because it wasn't my place to do that. That was their parents' place. The second thing I'll advise you of, is unless you have a paper from a parent saying that you have permission to have their child in a picture, I'd be real careful.
Oh, of course, unless they have a signed form, we have parental permission at all. But I'm not talking about that. I'm not taking pictures of anyone except for staff. I don't want kids in the picture. That's not my thing. I'm saying if they're standing by me...
I just want to mention, that's all.
If I can clarify on the students, the issue for students is that we cannot advertise to them that we're having something, we cannot invite them to join us. If a student asks you a question, you need to give them factual information. But I think the, the major point is that we don't realize the power we have over our children as adults. And so, again, this is back to the idea that, you know, "I love you, you're my teacher, you're wearing red and doing this, so I should do it too because I want to please you," not because I have an understanding of the political standpoint there. And, and, sorry to say, but educators have used children to manipulate opinions. And so, what we want to make sure is that that's not what we're doing. I have had requests from parents, can I send my students to... If a parent chooses to do that, and we have our educators who are bringing their own children, that's certainly up to them. But we are not advocating for children in any way to become involved in this. This is our adult advocacy role.
Let's move on.
Thank you.
Did you have a question, or is that your homework?
Well, I think it's been clarified. If I can just, because I am a liaison for my school, and I want to pass on factual information to the staff, and I do want tomorrow morning to be, to toe the line and not have anybody, you know, up in arms because we did it inappropriately or the wrong way. So I'm hearing you say, and we have not advocated to the children, to the students at all, but I'm hearing you say, because we have invited parents, that if parents bring their kids and they're walking with us, then we're not sending kids away. Okay. So, and then, you know, at an elementary level, I totally understand, our shirts are black and white and gray, so our students are wearing black and white and gray shirts. But for example, my son's at the middle school. I can send him in a red thunderbolt shirt tomorrow, but that's completely my choice. Teachers are not advocating for that. So I understand what you're saying, that we're not directing this specifically at the children, but what parents are choosing to include their kids is, is up to them. Okay, thank you.
Okay, 6.3. Really anticlimactic. This is the approval of the governing board meeting dates for 2018, '19. I would like to point out, while we're talking about this, that the week of July 9th, so we don't have an exact date on budget adoption, and then, at the end of the event of the week of July 8th, and those are again because of budget adoption. There is one exception to the Tuesday routine. If you're a partway down, we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday, March 21st, and that is due to spring break. We had some feedback from the board that it was important to have work sessions, so as opposed to having one meeting, we're doing a work session and then a Thursday meeting. We also would like to add to this year's calendar, and I wanted to bring it up separately, that June 26th, because we talked about the week of June, we have to have 10 days before budget adoption, that we would like to have our budget meeting at 4:00 on June 26th. So that will come out to the board separately. Any questions on the calendar? Item 6.4, this is a request to revise our contract with therapy staffing, to expand our teletherapy contract because we have had a loss in staff, and so we need to increase their services from 20 to 32 hours for the remainder of this full year, in order to meet ID. Item 6.5, this is the item that we're requesting for new bookstore software for the in-touch receiving program. This does interface with our Infinite Visions program, and will allow us to much better meet our audit requirements. Is this there?
Question...
We can, let's pass on that.
Question, and when the estimated maintenance was 5,500, is that correct?
Correct.
Is that estimated because they charge different charges for visit, different visits? Or they haven't given you an accurate estimate of what the policy is?
No, that's, that's the, if you look at the backup documentation on the next page, page, that's just the annual, the annual cost from here on out. The 35,000 is the upfront loading all the software, the initial license fees, and then the reoccurring costs will be that 5,500.
But that's a firm figure, right?
Correct.
Okay, I just, when I saw estimated, I didn't know whether you were saying it was a firm figure, or it was something that various problems would come up, and you didn't have any way of knowing.
No, if you look there, there's, there's 4,755 is what they're calculating it out to be. But we all know that, you know, companies sometimes raise their rates 5%, 10%, we just want to make sure that we don't have to come back before the board for an additional improvement. So it's not to...
That was my only question.
It's not to exceed. So if it does come in at $4,800 or 4,755, it's 4,755. So this is about the same as what they've been paying on annual maintenance, or... No, if you look just the sentence before that, our current software system, which is problematic quite often, and it will not have a very effective interface with our new financial system that we're putting in, the annual cost for that, you can see, it's just over 18,000 a year. So we have to save? So we'll save about 12,000, 13,000. So this is an example where we're trying to look at costs and our current expenditures, and if we can save in certain areas, we're, we're trying to do.
Is, is, looking at this, there is no tax, is that correct? After this discussion, I just had to ask.
Yeah, and it says, well, that's part of the reason why there's 5,500 there as well, because once that tax rate comes down... If it, if it comes down. Yeah, it's a... That's one of the tax cuts they floated this year, tax on software contracts.
Oh, 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 okay.
So total system cost prior to applicable taxes. So there won't be a use tax on that as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can barely say that. Oh, I see, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't have asked.
Thank you for asking, though.
That's why we have the 5,500.
Item 6.6 is a request to increase our not to exceed amount on the Tyler Technologies agreement. What we would like to do is add the grant project tracking module, which would allow us to create spreadsheets and integrate, integrate all of our grant tracking. This not to exceed amount is an increase of 50,000, and that is to cover the cost of the module, plus all of the expenditures related to the setup, consulting, training, et cetera, and to cover the, the travel back and forth because they have spent quite a lot of time with us, and to make sure we have a successful transition.
How much is it from installing the module?
The actual module is about $5,500.
And then the recurring fees, the annual fees thereafter, are 843 per year for, for just that module.
For just that month?
For the grant module. How is our grants now? Excuse me? We use, we use our IFA system, our current IFA system, but there are a ton of spreadsheets that are just self-created. So this will be, this is again going, speaking to efficiencies and going to a system that will speak from not only the accounts payable side, but payroll and HR. We're in the process of merging all of these departments into one system that will just speak to each other, it'll just, it'll speak across the board, all the departments. We're doing this on spreadsheets. I'm stuck.
I'm stuck.
There's, there's some data entry also into the IFA system where you can fill some reports, but there are a lot of just good old-fashioned Excel spreadsheets. And we're saving money on the overall Tyler package involved versus our current? Yes, the setup costs, like we mentioned before, the initial setup is, that's why we're, we're expanding, or we're increasing it to the not to exceed 400,000, because that's all of the initial setup. It includes the travel of the consultant. Our current consultant comes out of Houston, Texas, so he is here several times a month, and usually at a week, a week at a time, so he's here working with multiple departments. So we're paying for air travel and hotel and all the per diem that goes with that. But that's part of this package of writing out from the transition from one system to another.
And that'll result in all your departments coordinating under one system, right?
Correct.
The grant program itself, you've got your purchase and your maintenance. What's the total on that?
Everything, so if you, if you look at the second backup document, this was the one that, the one that you adopted back in October, the one-time setup fees were about 280,000, with reoccurring costs at 62,000 or so a year. Currently on our, on our current system, we pay 179,000.
But that's for the total system. What about the grants module itself?
Grants module is 840 dollars per year going into year two.
No problem. I just wanted to make sure we weren't putting a lot of money into a program that was almost as much as the grants were received. And that's all I wanted to be careful of.
Oh, no, no, no. No, we're, if you look at everything, back in October, I mentioned that we're probably, between, we're between 65,000 and 75,000 per year for annual costs compared to the 179,000 for the whole expense. So we're saving 100,000 a year especially on the software.
Right, you should save more now. The efficiencies should, should also save.
Absolutely.
Item 6.7 is the approval of the general statement of assurance for 2015. And this is the annual filing that we do to the Arizona Department of Education, which guarantees that we will follow all of the rules in order to receive our state and federal funding. You will note that you don't have any backup there, and that is because the assurances are now online and can only be addressed online. And I haven't, there's about five pages worth of them. And so as soon as I can figure out a way to, to copy and print them, I will email those to you in the next day or two. These are the normal things that are, basically that we're going to follow all of the audit and uniform requirements for funding, that we're going to have written policies in terms of conflict of interest, et cetera, that, that we will adhere to the uniform...
March, okay.
Yeah. Thank you. You know, that we will count tuition as matching cost. I mean, there's all this number of things that are listed here that we have to sign up on, and so I won't get that too. It's not quite the same as, as in the past, but it's not the same, the whole detail. And then item 6.8 is the approval of vouchers and student activity benefits. Any questions on this, Mr. Board?
Is it Master Teacher Grant item?
And then 100 informational items. We do have an informational report on educational services and professional services. And I would like to recommend, on the informational items, that we add a discussion item under governing board members in relation to procedures to follow. As in my comments after this, I would like to share some information.
Want me to say something? You don't have to, you can. Well, I think it's only fair to tell everybody that we've run into some serious physical problems in my house, and I'm going to be stepping down. And I don't want to. My constituents voted me in. They've been real good communication-wise, talking to me. But I think there comes a point you have to say, "I can't devote to the board where I should devote to the board." And I could probably hang in for a couple of months and beat myself to death and make you all miserable, but it's just not the way to do it. So I will be stepping down at the end of May. I'll, I'll be here until they appoint a new board member, but I'll be available through May if I'm needed for it. And I think everybody should understand, I'm not doing this because I just... My wife has, has had some physical problems, and I've decided that we need to move to the East Coast, be near the Mayo Clinic, and be where we can get taken care of. And I appreciate all the support. And I know that some of us have been at each other's throats, but it's all been because we care. Thank you.
So I just wanted to let the board know that I did get a call from Mr. File yesterday. He was the county superintendent. And he was filling me in, because I haven't been through this on the process, and some things have changed apparently since the last time that the board needed to fill a vacancy. And so, basically, he said that it's up to the board to determine if they have the process, if they want to invite people to apply for a vacancy, if they want to interview and ask for resumes, and so forth. But only one name should be sent to him as an appointment. It's not that people go to the county superintendent to be appointed now. It's the board's recommendation. What he did share with me is that because we are this close to an election, that if we appoint someone to the vacancy now, that person will have to run in November. And on November's ballot, there, there are two seats that are open for four-year seats, and then there should be also an open two-year seat. And so that would be the process right now. So the person who would be appointed would only serve until an election took place. If there's no one who runs in the two-year seat, then the board could make an appointment in January for the remaining two years. But because we have a, I forget what it's called in Arizona, but uncontested rule, if there's only one person that runs, that puts in for it, for the two-year seat, then they would get that seat. So they would have to declare again for this election, and then, and then run. So that was an important consideration. So what Mr. File said is, appoint somebody up until the election, or we would also have the option, because the election is so close, to leave the seat vacant until November election. If that would be up to the board to decide. And since we have not agendized this for discussion, this is what I would like to put on for discussion for next week's agenda, is the process the board would like to follow along.
I think we should.
Process up to and including actually coming up with a name?
I think the process as far as whether you, whether you want to appoint somebody between now and November, whether you want to. If you do want to, what would your process be? Do you want to just talk about people, whatever you want to do at that point? If it's, if, if you're thinking about actually the possibility of appointing, then we should put it as an action item, so that it's not just discussion. I can do that as well. Just add an item at the end of the action item.
I'd like to see it added and have the option, even if we didn't take advantage of it for there to be action.
You can do that. Add it as an action item. Basically, would be discussed, and certainly you could take action on the process that you agree to, if you wanted to do that as well. And if you have any additional questions for Mr. File, I can also arrange for him to be available by telephone, answering any questions for you.
Is there any other business in front of the board? Our next scheduled meeting is April 17th, one week from today, 6:00 PM, right here, the regular board meeting. If there's any other information from the board, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to motion adjourn.
One more?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
Kathy Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Don Mastin?
Yes. We are adjourned.